So let's call the meeting to order at 7:07. Uh, I have to pledge the flag, so I can get that done. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you all for coming. I know that it is warm in here. I appreciate you being here. Um, is there any public hearing? No? All right. We're gonna move on then. Um, approval of minutes, um, May 21st. Um, the only thing that I had about the, well, make a motion to approve the minutes. Start there. Then we'll, I'll make a motion. Oh, okay. So you got a second? I'll second it. Okay. Um, the only thing I noticed is just Ben Rubin's listed twice. Uh, it's just some like little things like that. There was, um, uh, up in the top in the, in the audience, he's, he, his name is listed twice. Um, and then, um, just the, um, the reorganization of the committee. Um, I don't, I don't mean this to sound picky at all, but in the future, if you could just kind of always do it the same way. Like sometimes you have who nominated first, and sometimes you have the, the position they were nominated for. It was just, it got a little confusing when I was reading it. Like I had to read, read it a couple of times to understand how it all went. And so I just wonder if people at home might be a little confused by that as well. Um, and then Avery Teala, it's T E L A in the, um, under H. The report of the Gilmanagure representative, the National School Development Council Award. Um, the last name is just T E L A. And I think that was it. It was just some minor, just little things like that. Did anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I think under the reorg C, the second paragraph where it says motion to nominate, I think that whole paragraph can be deleted because I think you capture everything where it says chair. But, oh, yeah. Yes, I agree. I think, cause I've definitely done that before. So I, I was like reading through it and I was like, oh, I think I know what happened. So I think we do a lot of talking of the same thing up here. Um, so I think that part can just be deleted and then you have it captured like chair, you know, vice chair and move, and then it moves like smoothly. So I think that was my only thing that I saw.
And again, please don't, I, I don't mean to nitpick, but the only other thing that I noticed is that the, um, the footing where it says agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. It, it ends up coming in between different paragraphs. So you end up reading it as if it's part of that paragraph. I don't know whether you can get rid, get rid of the footed footer or I don't, you know, reformat it some way, but it's just confusing when you read it because the footer ends up being plopped into the middle of, of paragraphs.
Oh, was that what that is? Okay. I had it highlighted and I wasn't sure.
Yeah. It took me a minute to figure out what it was and then I realized because it kept coming up.
Do you get what she's saying with that? Okay. For some reason, like I think when it's printed, it just shows up like in the middle of the page for some reason. It's not going at the end.
I think it was the formatting while I sent it, no one was open that. So I was saving it though, like save it this way, send it this way. So I'll keep an extra eye on that.
No, no worries. Okay.
Yeah, like it's sometimes it's in the middle of the page.
I had it highlighted, but then I clearly didn't catch all of them. So.
I suppose if it's online differently, it's probably fine, but. Okay. So that's all I had. Did you have anything?
No.
They were just little. Thank you so much. That was, that was, uh, there was a lot of notes. So I appreciate you writing that all up. All right. So, um, can we approve these with those minor adjustments? Yep.
Nothing else?
Great. Yep.
Aye.
Great. There's something sticky on the table right here. Um, okay. Hang on, I lost the agenda in my pile of papers here. All right. So we'll move on to warrants. We have payroll and vendor. Do you want to take them separately or all together?
Looking at the dates, I'd be fine to do it. I think I can support them all at once.
Batch? Do you have any objections to that? Okay. So we'll, uh, do all the warrants in one motion. Payroll warrant, 124, 125, vendor invoice, 1039, 1040, 41, 42, 1043, and secondary 1120. I mean, someone need to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Any discussion? Nope. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Uh, no opposed, no abstentions. Um, moving on to gifts and grants. Do we have anything that we need to vote on for gifts or grants?
No.
No. All right. Excellent. All right. Gilmanagure representative. Oh, yay.
Uh, so they're, they're meeting this evening. So that's where Jackie is.
Do you want to just tell us who you are?
I'm sorry. I'm Jen Icorn. I'm the Gilmanagure representative. Thank you. Sorry. It's nice to see you all. Um, so they're meeting this evening, but I do have their highlights. Um, I don't know if you guys were in Turner's on Saturday. Heard the parade and sirens, the, uh, Turner's Falls High School softball team. They won, uh, captured Western Mass championships a few, a while back. And then this past Saturday, they defeated Georgetown High School. Uh, a five to zero win, uh, which is the division five state championship. So congratulations to all of them. Wonderful.
Congratulations to them.
Yeah. Um, also they're, the principal at the middle school and high school is, is leaving. He gave his leave. Um, his last day will be July 1st. Um, so they're putting together a committee for a new hiring search. Um, that which will be done over the summer. Um, they're, they have their dates out already too. Um, their first day of school, uh, for grades one through 12 is August 29th. Um, teachers start on the 26th and I have a little flyer too for summer lunches. I'll leave with you guys, uh, different sites and where actually one of the sites is Irving Elementary. Um, so maybe we can make copies and put them around the building.
And when does that start?
The summer lunch, um, the sites won't be open on July 4th or 5th. Um, but it's through Project Bread and it runs all summer. I, I believe it's the first week, uh, so it's June 24th.
June 24th. Okay.
Through August 16th. So I'll leave this here. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. And are you also doing the tech school or are you just the rest? Okay.
Do you want to put this in, this stuff or leave, leave it here?
Um, leave it there for a moment.
Get it to the end of the.
Um, so, uh, let's see. Let's just.
Might be something from Jackie.
There is. I'm just, I thought I had it, but I closed out of it.
I have it right here. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Uh, okay. 142 students graduated. It was estimated that 1,500 to 1,700 people attended graduation. The school is exploring ideas where to possibly hold graduation offsite if weather, weather conditions are not good, rather than change the dates, which is what they did this year. Prom at UMass was spectacular. 253 students and guests participated and everyone looked awesome and were well behaved. Uh, FCTS held a Memorial Day exercise with Lee Astor, Marine Corps veteran, retired Monarchie Police Officer and current, um, paraprofessional at FCTS as the keynote speaker. 116 awards and 34 scholarships were given out at senior night. Many of the awards and scholarships were multiples. So it was more than the number, more than that number. Um, tech school is hiring two new carpentry teachers to ensure that the work that is done offsite always has two shop teachers overseeing the work. So there'll be a total of four shop teachers. They're also hiring one electrical teacher, one aviation instructor, one college career specialist, and one special education teacher. Some of the projects completed this year for community included the pavilion at the Shelburne Falls Senior Center, shed at the softball field, advanced manufacturing completed a very cool set of chess pieces, and 19 handles for the Warwick Fire Department for restoration of an antique fire truck. Um, during recent ag day at the school was successful and many people attended. The house project in Greenfield is going well. It's located on Meridian Street near the Green River School. And I go past it every day and watch the progress. Uh, veterinary science building will be open for the fall. This 4,800 square foot building is now complete. The aviation program is moving forward. The hangar is almost complete with the outside and the interior to be done over this summer. It is still on track to have the building and program start this upcoming year. And, um, Superintendent Martin is meeting with the AA, the FAA on June 27th regarding the program. And that is sincerely Jackie Boyd, representative.
Excellent. Um, I went to the, um, award ceremony and I can say that there were several former Irving Elementary students, um, well represented, receiving awards. So it was really nice to, to see their names, to hear their names, um, being called. I recognized several people. So, uh, Irving was well representative at, at that award ceremony, which was really nice. Um, great. All right. So that brings us to the Collaborative for Educational Services.
So we have not had a meeting because the last time we met, um, they were also meeting. But our next meeting is June 26th, which is next Wednesday at 6:00 PM on Zoom. So I'll have more updates on that after going to that.
All right. And, uh, do we have any regionalization update? Um, Jen Icorn, last week, we, last meeting, we were saying that you and Jackie were, um, on the regionalization committee. Do you have anything you wanna? No update. Okay. No worries. Uh, capital planning committee update.
Yeah. So we met on May 23rd. Um, Caitlin, um, Eric, the, um, head custodian, Ben as acting, um, principal, Mark and I all were attendants at that meeting. Um, I thought it was super beneficial. It was really nice to have us just all come together and kind of hear what, um, is going on at the school and what some of the needs are and requests are and kind of what is going on. Um, so they gave us a list of kind of agenda items in different priority orders. Um, and I have sensed, uh, followed up with the town, um, Deb Smith at the town to just kind of say like, you know, if we have five things, does it make sense to share all of that with you? Or do you want us to only scope in on like one or two? And so she said like, it's never a bad thing to have a ton of information. So, um, she'd rather see like all of them and then plan accordingly and kind of look at what money might be available and what might not be available. Um, so basically that process is gonna look like around, um, September, October. The town sends out an email with a form. Um, and then we'll work with the principal and Caitlin and Eric and, and everyone else to kind of say, okay, these are the projects that we want to push forward. The forms will be filled out. They'll be, um, submitted to the town. The town then over the winter months kind of looks at them, reviews them. They look at all the money. Um, and then it has to go to that town meeting to then be approved officially. And then kind of things go underway. So it's this like whole long process. Um, but I do think that we're trying to be as proactive and on top of things as possible. And really just make sure that with these capital planning projects, that the town is aware of these different things that are coming up. Um, along with just this open communication across all departments to just, uh, make sure that we're all on the same page and everyone kind of knows what's going on. Um, Mark, did you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of things. One is, uh, the form that comes out for capital planning is notably hard to work with. I don't know. Did you have a hard trouble with it last year? I know that several departments had difficulty making it work. And, um, you can just type out what has to go in different places and then submit it and, and let them figure out what they did wrong with their form. Um, I know that it became, that happened to us on my committee. Um, and I, I, it may have crossed paths here too. So as I say, it's a, it's, it's some kind of a self-writing form, as I remember, and it, it doesn't always write the way you want it to. So, um, I would say persist in getting the information out. Um, I, I don't know when our next meeting is, but it, um, I would like at some point for our committee, our subcommittee, to do a walkthrough, to see these things that are on our list. Um, even if it's just a short one. Um, and I want to express some disappointment that the two things that I, that were, um, on my list at the beginning of the school year, when I first got on the, um, um, school committee, the, the blinds, only one has been done and, um, none of the classrooms had anything done with them at this point. Um, and then the roof, in January, we had a meeting right over here prior to our school committee meeting. And I think everybody was well represented and there was talk of an engineering study getting going and it's just not happening. And if it doesn't happen this summer, it's gonna end up waiting for the capital committee in the fall, which is gonna put the whole project off a whole nother year. Um, unless something happens in this next month, um, where they get things together to do that engineering study. I mean, there was a talk of us drawing on, uh, unspent funds to make a sort of an earnest contribution. I call it an earnest, you know, like it's not really anything that's gonna make a huge difference to it, but it, it shows that the school, um, and the school committee are, are behind having it solved.
having it solved and get that going. The engineering study, when we, in January, we said we'd get the engineering study done this summer. So therefore, we would know what we were allocating, you know, through capital in the fall. And as far as I know, we don't know anything. We have some information on the heating that came in from Mass Save and, but that's, that's just the one piece. And, and I don't know where the holdup is. I sent out a couple of emails. And you were so, you were kind enough to get back to me, but I haven't heard anything else. And I don't know, do you know anything else?
I don't have an update, but we can certainly, you know, continue to push.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't take me anything to take a few minutes to send an email out to all the concerned parties and, you know, and bug people. But, you know, they're the ones who need to get going. And I would hope that we have enough available at the, when we wrap the school year up so that the capital committee feels like, okay, the school really wants it done. It's been years that the leaky roof has been going on. And it warrants, you know, a small book, a very small book of mistakes and errors and ongoing problems and ignored problems and stuff. But I don't think it needs to be that way. That's all I got to say. Well, obviously, I could say more, but I don't need to.
Okay, so let's circle back on those emails to the stakeholders and see if we can get some sort of momentum going again.
Are you all set with your, at the end of yours? Okay, all right. We are up to the superintendent's report.
Hey, hello, everybody. Marina West. Hello, interim superintendent, director of Student Support Services as well. I have a number of updates that I'm happy to share with you. First of all, Irving Elementary School staff and students have successfully wrapped up the school year with many great activities happening over the past few weeks. Wait till you hear them all. Irving Elementary hosted an online safety training from the Children's Advocacy Center for caregivers and staff. We also anticipate that there'll be an in-person version of the training, perhaps at the beginning of the new school year, and we hope that many caregivers and staff will attend. We also had a grade six visit to Great Falls Middle School, an all-school sing, a school council meeting, Turner's Falls High School graduate walk-through, Field Day. We had a grade five and six field trip. They had a successful day in Boston. Other grades went to Look Park, the Echo Terium, the bowling alley, and the library. We had a spring concert and an art night, which was very well-attended. We had a grade six graduation. And lastly, today was the last day of school for all students, as well as the preschool and kindergarten graduation, which were also really well-attended. Thursday will be the last day for staff before they enter into what we hope will be a wonderful and rejuvenating summer break. Ben Rubin has been doing a great job as teacher in charge, and the work he's been doing has been essential to the effective functioning of the school over the past several weeks. As we move into summer, Shannon Cleveland is looking forward to stepping in as superintendent on July 1. Myself, the leadership team, and central office have been keeping in touch with Shannon on matters that will carry over for the summer and the next school year so that she's best positioned for a smooth transition. Additionally, we are moving forward with hiring for the Director of Student Support Services position, which I will be leaving on the last day of June. We have a finalist who is in the final hiring steps. The next step will be the Joint Supervisory Committee discussion and vote on the contract at the upcoming June 25th meeting. This finalist is very happy to be looking toward joining the team as the Director of Student Support Services. Within Unit 28, we have had a few areas of hiring for the leadership and central office team, including superintendent, Director of Student Support Services, Lever Elementary School Principal, and Executive Assistant. The Lever Elementary School Principal search has been reopened and the Hiring Committee is looking forward to interviewing over the coming weeks. The first interviews for the Executive Assistant position will take place this Thursday afternoon. And I'm happy to share a quick update on the progress we're making on the 7D van project. Thanks to the town, the van is registered and insured and ready for use. I went over to where the van is currently parked last week to start it up and move it just a bit, and all went really well. We have a driver hired with an anticipated start date for early July, and we have a few options that we are pursuing to have sub-drivers available when needed. We do have a school spring post-up for sub-drivers. So if anyone is interested in becoming certified or is already certified and interested in pitching in on the sub-list, please apply. We are moving through contract details with the Bright Program, which was presented at the last school committee meeting, and we continue to look forward to a fall start. Lastly, a few updates on Irving Elementary School hiring for the 24-25 school year. We have a counselor who has been hired. We have an art teacher posting, which will be going up. We have a psychologist posting, which has been put up internally. And the process is that it goes up internal for five days before it gets put up externally anywhere. The same with the next one. We have a one-to-one paraprofessional posting, which has been put up internally. And Irving Elementary continues to have an opening for a paraprofessional, and anyone interested is encouraged to apply on school spring or contact the school to submit an application. And that is the end.
Yeah. I wasn't aware that, are we, are we using our art teacher?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Emily, right?
I think Emily Stewart.
Yeah. Right, Ben, Emily Stewart? Oh, all right. Well, I, I always like to know ahead of time so I can, I can thank our, our staff. So let me take that moment now to thank Emily. My children had Emily for a little bit. She came in right at the end of my, my children, and I worked with her the tail end of my time working with her here as well. So I wish Emily well in whatever her next steps are and thank her for, for providing art to the children of Irving Elementary School. I know that you guys just had an art night, and I know that's a lot of work on her part. So thank you very much to her. And we look forward to seeing who our next candidate for that position will be. Yep.
On the substitute driver, could we do a local ad instead of just school spring? Because the people who drive buses frequently are not the people who look at school spring.
And the recorder?
Yeah. Either recorder or the Montague paper, whichever.
I think they're all, I think they might be owned by the same people.
Yeah, but you don't get an ad in both if you put it only in one.
Oh, you have to specifically say both.
I believe.
Okay, that makes sense. Is that it or did you do more?
Hmm?
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, yep, that's a good, good suggestion. All right. Moving on, Director of Finance and Operations.
Hi, so it's been an extremely busy year. We're really looking forward to wrapping up the next couple of weeks.
And beginning fiscal year '25. The next budget season's right around the corner. We have to do the end-of-year reports for FY '24 this past year and then look forward to budgeting for, for FY '26 in the fall. So we're always kind of straddling three budgets, the one we're wrapping up, the one we're currently working with, and the one that we're working towards. We have a lot of new faces in Union 28 over the summer, some already hired, some that we're doing committees for. Currently, I think in this spring to the summer, I'm on five hiring committees. So it's been really busy but a really exciting time. And that process involves the hiring committees, interviewing candidates, the school site visits, and eventually settling contracts. It's been a busy time. All four budgets were passed at the five annual town meetings, most recent of which was last night at the New Salem Town Meeting. I was unable to attend since my daughter had her sixth-grade graduation at the school last night. So I went to the graduation. It was really perfect. I have to say that it was an amazing way of wrapping up, you know, my, my youngest kids' experience in elementary school. And the, the way that Mark Burnett was, you know, they, they gathered together memories of each of the students and talked about them through other teachers. And the parents that went full force and brought the most amazing kind of buffets of candy and snacks and beautiful balloon displays. It was really incredible. And I, I owe a lot to them, and I really want to thank the, the staff and the parents for, for making such an incredible event. I think Irving parents should be proud of, of what they put together for their, for their students. I passed around the fund balances for Irving, all of our revolving funds. We reconciled throughout the year with the town. All of them are in the positive, and so I don't see any need to make any transfers for the year. So for instance, we have a, a line for food service in our general fund that if we need to transfer money to the revolving to make it sustainable, we will. We don't have that need right now. Our revolving fund for food service, for after-school, they're all running in the positive, which is a really great thing. The scoping study done by DMI was completed and sent to us late last week. It contains two options, partial electrification and full electrification, and a thorough description of the benefits to both. Partial electrification at an estimated cost of $1,387,500 would reduce the building's annual carbon emissions by about 32%, while full electrification is estimated at $1,937,500 and would reduce the carbon emissions by about 75%. If the town would like to move forward, the next steps would be to engage with a design engineer who will size the equipment, provide system layouts, conduct a thorough assessment of the existing electrical infrastructure, and provide a quote for the installation. So it's going to take a partnership between us, the town, Eversource, and the selected engineer contractor to see the, the project through. So the very next step is, and this is, you know, we received this late last week. Today, Brian Smith and I emailed and he reached out to DMI, who said, can we, you know, go over this more thoroughly and really look and then choose to make the next step? And so we are trying to set up a meeting with DMI now or soon so that we can talk about the next step. This is not a small project. This is a very big project. This is a project that's going to take a lot of steps, a lot of, we're going to go through this phase and then we're going to go through the next kind of full analysis of the system we have, and then we're going to go through it. This is, we're, we're looking at a process that is going to take over a year. It doesn't come quickly. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of planning. And we want to have a collaboration with everyone in mind. And so for our next meeting, we would like to have one of the school committee members present. It was great to, it would be great to have one of the subcommittee, the capital planning subcommittee members there, so Caitlin and Mark, if you would like to be there. And when we have a time to meet or we can include you on the emails of when we'd like to meet, then we can have the kind of the next phase of, of this, really reviewing the, the scope that you see in the report I gave you.
So what is included, like high level, don't, you don't need to go into detail, but like what is included in that? Just the HVAC, which would be like heating and cooling? Does that include any of like the lighting, like electricity bill? Because I know that's really large on our end. Like, I just want to know kind of what is included in that.
So it would be looking at having some efficiencies with our HVAC system that would be either partial or full. Should I have to look at the, partial or full electrification of the system? And we were in the, the scope, it was told that it's not, and we shouldn't be minding on what's most cost savings, but we should also really look at what is going to reduce the emissions of the school more. And that's why you have those 32 and 75% estimates of the reduction of emissions. But it would not involve the electrical system of our school, the lighting, it's just heating and cooling.
Okay. Does that include like boilers and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so I think when we, when they, we walked through, what I thought was a walkthrough, and I was like, okay, I'll give it like up to an hour. It was like over two hours, roof, boiler room, every classroom, looking at everything. I'm like, this is a walkthrough.
Yeah, because there's individual units in each classroom or something like that? Okay, so that's all included in this?
So the age of the system has led us down to, to really not consider just repairs and partial replacements, but really replacing the entire system.
Okay. Thank you. And then all I have left is the expenditures for Irving Elementary and Secondary.
Yeah, I want to say this a minute because this is, this is going to hit capital along with, you know, a multi-year project with a roof. And it's mixed in with it to some extent, I gather? I mean, some of the heating and cooling units and electrification and stuff is going to fit into that whole question. I mean, true?
So ideally, when they replace the HVAC system, we would also do the roof at the same time so that we're not.
You have to reduce, yeah, that's.
Yeah, you're not ripping up the roof to do one thing, or you're not ripping up the, the units to do the roof. And so that's a sort of parallel process that we're, we're also.
The question I have is, is this going to be on top of that project as a separate project or is that going to be wrapped into that large-scale project?
That's a good question. I don't know right now because we're in very early stages of the project.
Because that's, that's really what. Well, that's where we have to come into, you know, the capital planning process in the fall, knowing what we're doing and what we're asking. Well, you know, we got to have our questions figured out.
Absolutely.
And this looks very good. I'm glad we've gotten it. And I just, we're looking at another bridge to build. I mean, you know, this is just like, you know, the town right now, you know, we got buildings to, a building to tear down, we got bridges to replace, and then we've got a school to fix.
Yep.
So.
I think that meeting that we have over, hopefully in the next couple of weeks with DMI and Brian and, you know, us, I think is going to be important to kind of ask some of these and kind of flesh them out a little bit as to what that looks like. And I would think it would depend on how we wrote the, not we, they wrote for the bits as to what the scope of the project is, whether this is included in the big scope or whether this is a separate phase of that. So, yeah, that's not necessarily on our plates, but we should be a part of that conversation.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm happy to join in. And I, after next week, my summer is, you know, pretty same as, all, all the same as all the rest of the year. Don't schedule in the afternoon when I have to take my dog to the dog park. No, I'm just kidding.
We can put the, the timeout, we can sort of discuss, you know.
Further down times, we can put it out to, to all of you, and if you'd like to attend the meeting, we'd love to have you.
I'm just going next week and other than that.
That's okay. I think the DMI person is, is as well, so. I'll be talking to that.
Okay.
And then you have, and I apologize for not.
Providing them earlier, we had a, some recent warrants, but I, you have all of the expenditures for Irving Elementary and Irving Secondary if you've had any questions on those.
Are you talking about the one that you listed here?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I know some numbers jump out. There's a high amount for, like, for custodial supplies. We are buying. like for custodial supplies. We are buying all the supplies we're going to need through the summer for disinfectants, carpet cleaner, all the things that our custodians work on through, through the summer. Um, there were some other kind of notable ones. Well, electric is always, the school power line is always notable and the school grounds maintenance and, uh, some snow blowers, backpack blower, chainsaw, those, especially the snow blowers. So we do the large majority of our snow cleanup, uh, the two custodians do. And that's always a challenge when, you know, we get a snowstorm on a Sunday. And so now we have, um, the two of them coming out with a tractor and some snow blowers on a Sunday and we tend to have a lot in overtime and it's, it's a whole day of their, their week, or their weekend that, um, that they're here. And so we're trying to get better equipment for taking care of the grounds that we need and to make it more efficient.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised that there was the amount of equipment that was being purchased all at the same time. It seemed like we're replacing whole fleets of things, um, you know, at the same time. Is the equipment that we currently have not working or is it just you're, they're looking to upgrade to different equipment?
I think it's aging and I think it's the best time to buy a snow blower.
And then, um, will we see that equipment then come up for surplus?
I will have to get back to you on that. Yeah.
That was brought up at the, that capital meeting, whether that would come up with surplus. So, yeah, it should.
It definitely, all of it should. I know. No one's taking anything home.
No, no, but I'm just saying, um, I would be more inclined to expect that it would just be shoved into the back of a shed and be left there. But it really does need to be, anything that is replaced, anything is replaced, needs to be surplus through the process. Even, I mean, if you look at the surplus thing from the, I don't know, the last select board meeting, there is some large-scale junk that's, that's being turned into scrap metal. Um, and it's been sitting around. And so I would say they need to look into getting that surplus. Cause if it's working, you know, there's a million guys out there that are quite happy to, um, work on snow blowers or use the parts. Um, I wanted to bring up the chainsaw that's mentioned there and suggest that we strongly look into the safety committee and get in with the town to have the town offer a certification course. If a person is hurt using a chainsaw and they are not certified and they are a town employee, um, pardon me, but there would be hell to pay with insurance. And this has come up in a number of other venues and, um, I think we could get some money to do that in addition to what we would have put in, in addition to what the town would want to put in to get a few more of their crew certified. But, you know, I, I, I mean, I've been using a chainsaw since I was sixteen. I don't worry about it, but, you know, if you're a town employee, you better worry about it. And as far as I know, we don't have the equipment here, either the safety, the chaps, the helmets, the face mask and so forth that are required, um, to do it if you're a town employee. And I mean, there's only certain town employees that are allowed to use, do chainsaw work. So I strongly want to, um, suggest that that be taken. Markdown is an important thing to happen. And...
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, so I don't know, Corinne, if we could put that on you to maybe set, give as a, as a, um, handoff to Shannon when Delight first comes, is to look into that, into whatever we need for safety courses for the custodial staff that's going to be using these chainsaws. I know that, uh, it comes out of, I think the training come out of Brian's office, but I'm sure the DPW or the highway department could help arrange, along with the insurance company, whatever trainings are necessary through OSHA or any of the other, um, companies that, you know, places that do that sort of thing.
I am also bugging Brian about it.
But it should come from, you know...
No, his office will do it.
I mean, it should come from the superintendent.
It should come from a bunch of sources.
And we have both of you sitting here, so whoever, you know...
Yeah, everybody get on it, you know?
It's a good point though. That's something certainly we should be keeping, um, because we do want to keep our insurance premiums down. So just by having the certification, if that helps our insurance premiums, that's something worthwhile.
So lastly, and this is not on my report, but, um, looking at going to the summer and having the availability of hard warrants be signed at the school and what the school staffing is and when it's, when it's open and people are taking vacation, um, is it okay if I reach out to the town to make sure that we are okay to use DocuSign?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything more. So...
Me neither. Okay.
I don't, I don't know where we are at.
I'll reach out to the town and see if we're able to use it. If we are, if we could proceed, that's just going to make everyone's life easier over the summer months. All right, thank you.
As we're into, into, uh, the next fiscal year, you know, I'm available. So this is not in line in the afternoon.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, it's worthwhile just to get an answer on that.
Yeah. They were going to look on, look into whether they wanted to do it for other stuff.
The select board was looking into that. So, yeah.
I haven't heard back from them.
Re-initiate that discussion.
I just had a quick question on the fund balances. I think most of them are pretty self-explanatory. Um, but I just wasn't sure where money was coming from with like the foundation reserve and the adult education professional development. Um, I think those were the only two because otherwise like after-school gets their money from tuition from after-school, preschool gets their money from the tuition from preschool and then the food service gets their funds from the, the grants that are coming in. But I think those two were the only ones that weren't like really evident.
So I, I only laughed because it was like those were the two that stand out to our office also.
Oh, okay.
Um, foundation reserve was, uh, the, the potholes, um, money that came in, I think at the DeVal Patrick era where it's just been like a money for anything when you need it and it's just been sitting there. We have talked to the town about spending it out and, and closing that account. And that was, that was, that should happen soon that we can have that. And then the, um, the adult education professional development, that was a program... Ben, do you know anything about this? Okay. It is long ago, there was, this is like folklore, I guess. I don't know exactly. So I'm only speaking from what I've heard. Um, there was some adult education that happened to the building and so there was some money that, it was a revolving fund created around it, but wasn't totally spent out and we have no idea what to do with it now. So we've connected with the town about just sending it back to the town if there's anything we can do. Cause we, we can't spend that money. So it is, we don't have the, the same capacity. And so we've connected about, take it back. We don't want it. We don't know what it is.
And what are you planning on studying this, the pothole money on?
I would have to look back through emails. Um, I can't remember exactly. I'm going to have to look back.
Okay. Yeah, if you could let us know. I'm curious what, what we have that we need to spend that money on.
Yeah. And I would, I would rather spend down, there, these kind of like the pothole money that, that just kind of sits there. I'd rather spend that out and leave more money back in our general budget to return to the town. So that's just one of these accounts we're looking to spend out, get rid of and then, and not spend from our general account to issue back to the town.
I, I, I think, I think it would be a wa, it wouldn't matter which you, you could return.
I don't know that we can return the potholes money. That might, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah. So I am really curious what, what the plan is to spend that money on. What, what are we needing that, you know, that isn't, isn't being taken from somewhere else? Cause we do have quite a surplus at the end of the year. Um, you know, so, um, and then how much of that is going into the new special education line, uh, fund that we set up back last year?
We have to create that line at the beginning of the budget. Cycle. So if you wanted to create a line for FY twenty-six, we could have a line with a certain amount funded and then at the end of the year, put that into that account. But we can't just issue money over to that.
Um, well, at our last year's special town meeting, we created that account.
You did, but it, we didn't create the line in the budget to be able to do that.
It's, it's a...
I thought we took the load to make it happen.
Yeah, I, I believe so. And it's not, it's not, we don't fund it upfront. We fund it from whatever the, the leftover money is.
That's not the way that those accounts work.
It definitely, so let's have a bigger conversation of that because that's...
Sure, absolutely.
Around and around. DeMaro, um, uh, weighed in. We had legal weigh-in to set that all up. So it's, it's all settled and so...
We've set up the account, but now it has to be funded, it has to be funded on the front end of the budget.
No, it doesn't get funded on the front end. That's the whole point of this, of this particular, um, special education line is it only gets funded if there is surplus and it's only up to, what did we say it was? Two percent, one percent?
One point, something.
One percent of our operating budget at, at the end, if there's surplus. So if there isn't surplus, nothing gets funded into it. Or if there's less than one percent surplus, it gets funded. So it's not something that gets budgeted upfront.
So that is not my understanding of trainings.
Been to, but we can have a bigger conversation about it another time.
Okay. Well, we're going to have to have that conversation before June thirtieth so that we can deal with it before, uh, we close out the accounts. Because that's definitely something that we had planned to do, um, anticipating an overage, uh, that was, where part of that money was supposed to go. So are you, are, do you still work like a regular schedule? Okay. So we'll touch base then with, um, it's unfortunate that Jen and I Corinne just left because I think she had, um, information about it too. So, okay. So we'll circle back to that after Wednesday. Um, all right, we're up to the principal report.
Do we have to vote on it or because there's no recommendation?
Oh, uh, it's end of year transfers, there's no end of year transfers, right? So we're no need to vote.
If you wanted to, but there's none recommended. All of our revolving funds are in the positive and are in good shape.
And within the budget, we are, all of our cost centers are within budget? We don't need to transfer any money within or across cost centers?
Well, no, we don't, we don't transfer within the local budget. If there's one line that's over, one line that's under, all within the local, we don't transfer money at all.
But between cost centers, we do. So if...
Then we can make by cost centers.
So like, um, salaries, right? If salaries went over but, but professional, um, I don't know, look at the budget and see what a different cost center is. A different, um, so if salaries went over but, um, I don't know, transportation didn't, we would, we would transfer to balance out the different cost centers.
No, we don't transfer within the budget.
Okay. All right. So principal report.
So we don't have a principal's report, um, this evening, but Ben Rubin and I met to ensure that everything was included in, in my report.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I apologize. Let me circle back to the fact that you are also leaving our, you said that in your thing and I, it, I meant to say it and then we moved on. So let me just circle back and say thank you very much for your dual service at the end here, being both, uh, our superintendent and our, um, our, I want to say sped director. Is that technically your title?
Student support services.
I knew it wasn't the right one. Uh, director of student support services.
Services.
It's a long one.
I know. So, uh, I wish you good luck in your next endeavor, moving just over, just over to the next district.
Yes, I won't be far. I won't be far. Yeah. And it's been an honor and a pleasure to be here.
Thank you very, very much for, again, for stepping into this role as well. I know that was a lot to put on your plate right at the end. So, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
And thank you, I was just going to say, and thank you for Ben, um, for holding down the fort, um, and kind of helping the staff get through the end of the year, helping the children get through the end of the year. Um, I know they felt really well-supported and tri, you know, smooth transitions and, and things went really well despite everything else. So thank you for all of that.
And definitely, I know at least I have heard, very positive to both of you for the communication. Just excellent communication, keeping people in the loop, uh, sending it out multiple different ways so that everybody, you know, can get it, whether it's class dojo or for, you know, hard copy or email. So we appreciate the communication because that's, that's really, it goes a long way to keeping, uh, everybody informed and understanding what's going on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Irving Teachers, oh, sorry.
Um, you said, um, before this meeting started, we were informed that, uh, the elementary school is not going to be responsible for cleaning?
Oh, so that's, that's, that's kind of...
You got that on the agenda?
Well, yeah, we're working on that. We're working through that.
Oh, wait a minute. That means you're working on the problem? Okay. I'll let it go.
Yep.
Um, Irving Teachers Association report. I don't think there is one, but I just wanted to put a plug in here that I, um, myself, and I know a lot of community members really loved this portion of our meeting. They really loved just hearing the different updates from the different classrooms, from the different, um, specials areas. Just, you know, even if it was that one or two blurb of like, hey, we're doing this or hey, it was great to see this or come check out the art night on whatever day. Like this was a really great section that was added. And so I'm hoping that we can kind of continue that, um, for next year and that it doesn't have to be the same person. And honestly, if it's just an email and we read it out loud, like I'm totally fine with that as well. But it's just nice to hear those positive things that are happening without, within the building, um, that we can also, you know, share with the, um, public and the community as well. So that was really great. Um, I will just echo with the sixth grade graduation. I've talked to many families that were there and they've said exactly what Caitlin said. Like it was really great. Um, and then I had the pleasure of attending one of the preschool graduations today, uh, but then also talked to many families that were at the other preschool graduation and at the kindergarten graduation. And all I heard was like great praise to all of the teachers of, each teacher did an amazing job. Um, they were really well-attended. There were a lot of families. Everyone was excited. The children were smiling. It was just really great to see this building, this whole parking lot was very full at nine forty-five this morning. Um, and I'm sure it was full for Monday night as well. So, yeah.
I was like, more so today than it was last night. It was like every inch of grass was covered with cars.
Yeah. We were you fitting everyone. Yeah, I'm not sure because we were all real close together, but it was just nice to have that feeling of community back, that excitement, the, you know, celebrating these children that have worked so hard all year long. Um, and just some of our youngest learners, which is really great to see, to get them excited, to keep, you know, moving on and going through the school. So, um, just wanted to shout that out during that section. So...
Great. All right. Uh, Budget and Personnel Committee meeting, uh, report, sorry. So do we have a, anything to say? I don't, I don't have anything to say?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Uh, Union Twenty-Eight Committee report. Uh, our next, um, next meeting is in September and then...
Oh, Union Twenty-Eight.
Union Twenty-Eight Committee report. Um, I mean, the Joint Supervisory Committee is meeting next week. Um, I don't have anything else to mention unless you two do, nope. All right, Van Driver, we got an update during your, your report. So I think that's amazing. I am excited to hear that we are just so close, so close to getting that van on the road. I can't wait for people to see it driving around too. Um, uh, new business. Uh, so we have a request from, um, for, to, to increase the occupational therapist position for FY twenty-five, so next year, um, to increase it from a point six to a point eight. So basically adding an extra day. Um, and so the, uh, the, I got, or Ben sent me some information. Um, it's, it's a caseload issue. The person that is in this position as the occupational therapist has just had an increase to her caseload, um, so much so that services, um, you know, uh, so many more services that she needs the extra time and apparently was not anticipated during our budget, um, conversation in the... and apparently was not anticipated during our budget conversation in the fall and in the winter. So there is a request to increase that. The budget has been looked at in relation to that increase.
Yes, so if it... I mean, obviously, there's a lot of, of needs in a school that we don't look at financially, but more of the needs of the student. And so we have some, I have some ideas of how we can compensate for that. One of them being, we can, we have until September thirtieth to pay, to use SR three funding. And so we can kind of shift some of the, of that. So we, we have some ideas to enable us to increase this position.
Okay, so financially, this is something that we're, we're able to do. I know the needs are dealt with on that end, but the financial is dealt with on this end. So I'm looking to you to say financially, yes, we can, we can do this.
Okay, so recommendation from the, from the principal and superintendent is to do this. Financially, it sounds like we can do this, but we need to vote to do this because it does affect our budget.
Okay, I'll make a motion to increase the OT position for FY twenty-five, increasing the position from a point six FTE to a point eight FTE.
Second.
Okay, so is there any other discussion that's necessary about that?
No, I just think that like we do with other roles and other needs and positions that keep us in the loop of if this is gonna continue or we need to up it, increase for the next year as we're going through budgets, just to be aware of, hey, let's add this just in case because we're seeing some needs come in. I think that's, you know, my only thing, but...
Yeah, yeah, I, I would echo that. You know, budget season is, as Caitlin said, is coming up pretty soon. So if we can really take a good look at our staff and our needs and try and project as much as we can forward so that when we're creating the budget, we can do it at that point. But that's all I, I, you know, I will say about that. So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, then it passes. Uh, Pi report.
That's back to me. Um, so this year was definitely a rebuilding year for Pi. And I just, we just want to thank everyone who attended a meeting, volunteered their time for any of our events, participated in any of our fundraisers, and donated any items throughout the year for different things that we did. It was greatly appreciated. It was nice to see the community and the school come together and really work together as a team to make those things happen. So we're really excited about that. Fundraisers were really successful this year with all of the participation from the school and from the community and allowed us to continue to offer family events. And we're gonna be able to continue to offer those next year as well. So we're excited about that. And then we are planning on having our moms fundraiser again at the beginning of next school year. So just keep an eye out for that. It's usually around like the end of August. I know we are not the only school that does them. So sometimes some schools beat us out with getting that information out before we do. So I just wanted to share tonight that we do anticipate the moms fundraiser. So if you are in need of moms, come next school year, definitely we'll have them available. And then the last part is we did give out two senior scholarships. One at Turner Falls High School, which went to Ann Kolojay, and one at the Franklin County Tech School, which went to Aiden Bailey. And both of those scholarships were for two hundred dollars. And the way that we do it is we actually provide them with a gift card upfront so they don't have to turn in, you know, any stuff and they can kind of use it for whatever their needs are on their next journey. So congratulations to those seniors on graduating and for getting the scholarships. And then we're just really excited for next year. We have some new fundraiser ideas. We have new events. And our participation from families has been growing, which we're really excited about, which I think I've said about ten times now. But really, it is all good work that's happening with Pi and it's kind of nice to bring it all up again. So thank you, everyone, and we'll be back next year.
Excellent. All right, so we're up to the policy review and update. So on our agenda, it says first reading and final vote, which is unusual. Usually, there's a process we go through, first read, second read, and then we vote. There is a way to kind of skip ahead of that in certain situations and do kind of a first and final, which is what is on our agenda tonight for three specific policies. Online fundraising and solicitations, employment of principals, and relative, relations of, with, I think it's supposed to be police authorities. Yeah, there's a misprint in the agenda. And, but we also have a policy that says, you know, try and only do this in the cases of an emergency. So what I want to put out to you both is we can vote to waive that policy of going through those steps and do first and final tonight. Or we can do a truncated first, first reading and at our next school committee meeting, because we will need to have another school committee meeting to ratify our Unit B contract and tie up some other loose ends, we can do our final vote at that point. So it's not one and done tonight. It is mostly done tonight with a final vote at our next meeting, which will be shortly, hopefully. So what do you guys want to, you know, I'm kind of looking to you to just help me decide how you want the procedure.
I wanted these on, done, done as soon as possible. And I didn't realize we were going to have another school committee meeting this school year.
I don't know if we're gonna, you know, get it in before the fiscal year of July first. So I, I, you know, because it's not scheduled yet. But I will tell you, within the next couple of weeks, I anticipate we will have another school committee meeting because we need to, again, ratify and tie up some other things. So there is, there will be one on the horizon well before the first of the school year.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me in that sense. I really wanted to see these in place before we start. These are ones that we, which should have been brought forward, but were not. And they were brought forward mostly on my initiative by going and looking for them in response to events. And the only one that's out, as far as I understand it, that's out with other schools in, or in the union is the fundraising one, which one of the other schools spent apparently a long time discussing. But I don't, we've not had a lot of input. But I just wanted to get that one in as an encouragement to people, as a way of funding special projects that come up during the year outside of the regular project process. So I just wanted to get that one in there at the beginning of the school year in case in October or November, somebody has a great idea that would cost them seventy-five dollars and they want to go online to get it, do it, the policy would be in place. The principals one just says that, and this is one from the MAS C, it says superintendent hires, evaluates, and fires principals and can extend an existing contract. But school committees have to approve initial contracts with, which makes sense given the finances because initial contracts have to be paid for somehow. And then the relations with police authorities. There's a bare bones one in, I think. And we, and I went through to the police chief to make ours much more thorough. And if they can get in place before next year, that's good enough. If there's some reason not to just vote them one and done, I mean, is there a reason not to?
Only in that, you know, we have a policy that says only in, try to do it only in cases of an emergency. It's not technically an emergency, so I just wanted to give one more opportunity. I, I read through the policies. I do have a grammatical change to the policy regarding the police. It's nothing major. It's just the, the, what is it, the third paragraph has some grammar issues. I...
That's fine, that's...
So, but that's why I put it out to you. So yes, technically, we can, we can waive the policy and do it tonight.
Well, if you've got a grammar change, let's do that. Yeah, why don't you put that grammar, huh?
Go ahead, yeah.
I was just gonna say, why don't you put that in and we'll do it the next time? But I'm happy to do it either way.
But I, I agree with you that these should be in place before the school year begins. I think it's important that we have these in place. So I, you know, if we weren't going to have another meeting, I would say without question that we would waive that policy and do it tonight. But just knowing that we have to have another meeting anyways, I just thought we could put it on that agenda.
I would move that we just do it. That way, the next meeting can be just straightforward with its one or two purposes and not cluttered up with other things. So I'm just gonna move that we make grammatical errors, correct the grammatical error that you found, and we move these to a vote and acceptance.
That works. You're fine with that, too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, all right, so I hear that the majority wants to move forward with waiving. So we will be waiving policy BGB, which is the policy that talks about how to adopt a policy. And the change is in the third paragraph of the police, so anyway, wait a minute. So let's take a vote on that first before we get ahead of ourselves. So I need a motion to waive the policy. We'll vote on that and then that...
So moved. I moved, we waived the policy.
Okay. Second. Okay, and so in this instance, we'll waive policy BGB. Okay, so all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now, having waived that, if we look at the police KLG policy, in the third paragraph, it says, "In any serious incident involving staff or students," and then parentheses, it says IA, i.e., first of all, it shouldn't be a capital A, "any threats of harm bringing, bringing or threatening to bring a weapon to school," on and on and on. There's no closed parentheses there. So we need to close the parentheses in order to make it make sense. So if you look at it, so we'd strike the capital A and make it a small a, and then it needs to close parentheses somewhere. So I assume what you mean, what is meant here...
Is at the end of the list.
Or accidental, I think is where the closed parentheses, do you want to read that and make sure that's what your...
I think it's that, caused by another student or acts. Would have to be accidentally. But if that's stressed, that's a really stressed phrase. I think this came from the chief, or I'll blame him. How about we just take, take the word accidental out, put the parentheses back with a student and, and put an and/or. Here it says and/or, I mean, and, and then just so I can say and/or to quantify another's.
I'm just trying to figure out where you are.
And or, there, that's where the or is. My handwriting must have deteriorated. And then this is, that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay, all right, so the new paragraph says, "In any serious injur, incident involving staff or students, i.e.," so parentheses, "i.e. any threat of harm, bringing or threatening to bring weapons to school, weapons on school grounds, assaults, assault and battery, bullying, and/or any injuries caused by another student," closed parentheses. Accident, and then the rest of the paragraph goes on. Accident injuries will be blah, blah, blah. Okay, so is that clear to you, Caitlin? Okay, and that's fine with you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we can vote these individually? Maybe that would be best if we do that, just for clarification. All right, so let's make a motion to accept policy KLG, the one we're just talking about, Irving School Committee Relations with Police Authorities.
So moved.
As amended, sorry. I'll second. Okay, so you seconded it. So any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, then we'll do policy GBEBD, geez, please. Online fundraising and solicitations crowdfunding. So again, the gist of this is if a, if a staff wants to use things like Donors Choose or GoFundMe, that sort of thing, the clarif, being clear that it has to be approved by the superintendent and any materials received this way become, become property of the school committee, technically.
Also, it includes a statement that if they end up short, they should not, they should be willing to come to the school committee to see if there is a way it can be funded.
Yeah, to make up the difference.
I just, one of the, I just, I wanna sort of go back into our previous vote and say, say a comment I should have made about discussion, in discussion, on doing it now. And that is, we put these forward, put them out in public, put them out in meeting, and we really didn't have any input from anybody other than people we directly solicited. So, so that's why I want to go forward and just say, because I think if we waited, I don't think we'd get anybody else.
Okay, I, I agree. So that's what's on the table right now. So we need a motion in a second?
So moved.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, passed. And finally, uh, policy GCBB, employment of principals. A motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay. All right, so now we have a second read, first vote. So we're back to our traditional way of doing things on a school district, legal status, school committee legal status, and school committee member authority. So this is just our first vote on these things. They will come up again. School committee, school committee legal status, and school committee member authority. Yep, all right, got them all.
Is this one not listed? Or am I really messed up?
That's the one that we waived. So she just included it so that we knew what we were waiving in order to do the one and done.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you.
That's the policy about how to make a policy.
Okay.
Too many letters.
Yeah, I know. We gotta find a better system.
All right, so...
Trying to figure out if we, if... No, no, I, I think we put, put or found a purpose in these. I don't know whether it was an amendment or, but I was just looking through the, member authority starts with a statement that basically says, you know, if, one of us says, school committee, member authority. Basically, it says, I mean, it says right at the beginning, if we say something by ourselves, it, it, it's not the school committee. It only is the school committee when we say it in public at a vote, with a vote.
Or, or given the directive to act as a single.
Yep.
Yep, and then there's a, the legal status is, is based on state law and is, is a restatement of, of state law. And I'm trying to find if, one of these had a place where it didn't have, it had a blank for Irving. No, I think they're all set. So, all right.
So let's start with this, policy AA, school committee, school district legal status. Honestly, it's just, it's just saying that by law, every town has to have a school to educate their children. It's really nothing that, that we are creating. It's really just, just referencing that. So this is our first vote on it, so we make a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that one's pretty easy. The school committee, policy BB, school committee legal status, again, it's not a policy in the strictest sense of the word, it's just kind of, the purpose of this policy is to find the school committee under state law, is a governing board of the municipality's public school district, so it's just kind of reiterating what we are. So, motion and a second?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, BB AA, school committee member authority, again, Mark, you kind of summed it up. So I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, good, all right, so those will come up one more time, and then we will be done with those. So, now at this point, unless there's anything else, we will be moving into executive session in accordance with open meeting law. Chapter 38, Section 21A, move into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining. We will not be coming back into open session. So before we do that, I just want to say that our next regular scheduled school committee meeting will be September 17th at 7:00 p.m., but as I just, I mentioned earlier, we will be having one in the next couple of weeks for just a couple of, of housekeeping issues that we need to, to finish up with. And the Irving Policy Committee meeting will be right before that on September 17th at 6:30.
Are we inviting anyone into the session?
No, nope. So, we need a motion and a second to go out, and then a roll call vote. Okay, I'll make a motion to move into executive session. Want to second it?
Second.
Okay, so Bailey, aye, Bailey, a little aye.
Bailey's the aye.
All right, thank you so much for staying here, I'm sorry, I figured it was warm.